Oh yeah, okay, it's only recording me and you. You can see it on the participants tab. Okay, so welcome everyone to this event, Coming Home, Guided Breathwork Session with Hannah from Inspired Breathwork. I just wanted to do a quick digital orientation. Feel free to kind of get comfy, stretch and adjust and settle into being here in the room. And if you can take a couple of moments just to check your name, personalize it to how you want to be called in the space and preferably with your pronouns as well. And while you're doing that, I'm just going to introduce a little bit about what, who I am, what 16 days is and what this event is about. So I'm Lou, I'm the Against Sexual Violence Project Administrator at God's Miss Students Union. And this event is part of our 16 Days Against Sexual Violence Project Programming. And 16 Days is an international campaign that calls for the elimination of violence against women and girls globally. It's recognized by the UN. At the SU, we deal with against sexual violence work, which is definitely a form of gender-based violence. We try not to gender sexual violence. We know that anyone could be a perpetrator and anyone can be targeted by the behavior. But we also know that women and marginalized genders are disproportionately impacted by sexual violence. Today, I'm really glad to have Hannah from Inspired Breathwork come speak with us and run this breathwork session. So Hannah is a certified breathwork facilitator. And she's also works with Alchemy of Breath. And she has a focus on working with survivors of sexual violence as well as BIPOC communities. She's currently based in West Africa, in the Gambia, but most of her practices are online. And so at the end, we'll share a link to her website where you can kind of see more of what she does and look at how the workshops and one-on-one programming. And I think that's everything, Hannah. Welcome. Thank you so much.
Hmm, thank you. It feels so special to be introduced formally. Well, thank you. So yes, we're going to do a breathwork session. And this is a practice that I got into and got involved with because I was really struggling to find a therapist and finding a therapist that really resonated with. And when I started doing breathwork, it was not something somebody was telling me. It was not something that I had to take on for other people. It was just me and my breath. And that became the most healing thing for me in my process. I was super skeptical when I was looking at therapists. It was like a major dating situation. I was like, okay, no, yes. And it was just too tiring and I couldn't do it. And so I dived into breathwork because it was like, it's just me. I deal with myself. I bring it with, I bring the healing to myself. And so I find it such an empowering practice. Have any of you done breathwork or any forms of breathwork before? And you can speak openly. Yeah, Kat?
It just sounded like a whole heap of mumbo jumbo to me, darling, to be honest. But you know, so I'm very interested because it sounds, I'm interested in it because I'm interested in things that can help healing without necessarily having to go into the trauma and re-traumatize. If that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yes.
For me, that's where it interests me.
Great. Okay. Yeah. So last week I did a seminar on understanding the trauma cycle and about the sympathetic and parasympathetic nervous system, also about the vagus nerve and the amount of tension that is held within our body. Even if we don't cognitively remember anything, all of our experiences are in our bodies. One of the things that is also so profound with this work is that every experience that you've had, whether it's joy, elation, inspiration, sadness, shock, fear, has a breath pattern to it. There was a breathing pattern to every experience that you've had. And the breathing system is both something that is autonomic, something that happens without us having to think about it. But it is also something that we can bring consciously. So it's actually one of the only systems that we can engage with that work both on the conscious level and the unconscious level. So this is a really interesting practice to engage with, especially when we're trying to process trauma without it being too overwhelming, without going into kind of reliving the practice. So what we're going to do, just with a little bit of context of what it is, the breath engages with our central nervous system. And so with every inhale, we're engaging with the sympathetic nervous system. And then whenever we exhale, we engage with the parasympathetic. And so this is activation and deactivation. We're going to do this in a consistent, clear, continuous, cyclical way. And we're going to do it through the mouth. And we're going to breathe for around 14 minutes consistently together. It can be quite challenging. There might be some kind of resistance to it. Breathing through the mouth is challenging because you get a dry throat. But also because you're actively changing the chemical balance of your blood right there. So we're not hyperventilating because we're breathing equally in and out. But there are tendencies to shift into different states. And one of the powerful things about breathwork is that it can tap into a very human physical self, but it can also tap into kind of our expansive energetic, some may say spiritual self, but it's kind of like the actual our selves that we are. So during this breathwork, you might feel kind of cramping within your muscles. You might get your fingers tightening or your legs tightening, and this is totally normal. So if you feel that, breathe, continue breathing. And allow that to come through. And if it's too much, then you can just breathe a little bit lighter. You might get really cold, so ensure that you have like a blanket around you or something that you can kind of pull. Or you might get really hot, so you can take it off. And we'll be doing this lying down. So I don't know if you're in a space where you can lie down. But we'll be lying down and our heads are going to be back. But please don't put anything too shy under your head because we want to keep the throat open. So if you have a pillow that's too high, then you're going to close the throat space. So something that's really thin under your head. You can start setting up your space, but I will still need to give you a little bit more information. All right. So as you're nesting, I will tell you a few kind of contraindications. So these are things that we can be wary of when we're breathing. So if, for example, you have any cardiovascular issues or any high blood pressure or you're pregnant, it is advised that we breathe through the nose. But other than that, it's fine to breathe through your mouth. All right. So the way that the journey goes, so we'll be breathing together and it is accompanied with music. And the way that the music is designed is it kind of is a slow start, then we go up and then we reach peak. So this is kind of the high point of the music, the high point of the journey. And then we come back down and we do a little bit of integration. I really advise you or I invite you to stay with the breath. And also I invite you to stay with the body. So really noticing what is happening, being aware of what is happening, being aware if you try and leave and then bring yourself back into the body. We will be breathing through our mouth. So I'll just model that for you. And it's always continuous and it's always complete. So I'll just show it to you, mouth open, breathing in. You might not be able to hear, but the rhythm is very gentle. We're not going heavy intense breathing, really gentle, deep into the belly and slowly out. And it's always continuous. So maybe we can do it a little bit together and I can try and bring this closer. You okay, Kat? Ready? Inhale. We're not forcing anything. We're not forcing any inhale, not forcing any exhale. There's no stop exactly. So there's no pause at the top and there's no pause at the bottom. We just continuously breathe. And if any feelings or sensations come up, which is very normal, to breathe through it. And sometimes it's hard to try and stay with the breath. I'll be with you the entire time. Yeah, do you have any questions? No? Okay. So before we start, I kind of, what tends to happen is we have a lot of movement, right? So a lot of movements. So I'm going to invite you to a little short, maybe four-minute bio break. Go to the toilet, get yourself some water and then we can start. Yeah.
Is it normal, like, can you get a drink of water in the middle?
Yeah, yeah. Lou and Kat, when you lie down, I probably won't be able to see you. But so would it be possible for you to tilt your, whatever, just so that I can see? Yeah. Taking these moments to, yeah, enjoy as you can. Thank you. Allow yourself to arrive. Lying down on your back if you can. Taking these first moments to notice how we're feeling right now. There's some nervousness. What does that feel like in your body? And here right now, we're just breathing through our nose naturally. And I'll tell you when to start breathing through our mouth. Noticing what you're holding, noticing any tension that you're holding in your body. And if you're, if you can, allowing that to sink a little bit. Going to wait until I get confirmation that Nessa is back before we start. Okay, great. So allowing us to fully arrive in the space that we're in. In the room and the living room, on the floor, on the bed. We are here right now. In this moment, can you identify how it feels physically? Be lying there. What can you feel? You can say it to yourself. Feel the weight of the blanket. Your head on the mattress or the pillow. This session is called coming home. And home is a hard place to be if it doesn't feel safe. And our homes right now are our bodies. Ourselves. If it is safe to be here, and if that feels true to you, you can say it. In this moment, you are safe. Even if it doesn't feel like it. In this moment, you are powerful. Even if it doesn't feel like it. And in this moment, you are beautiful. Even if it doesn't feel like it. Bringing your attention inward and softly closing your eyes. I invite you to bring in a memory of joy. Maybe a memory of laughter. A memory of peace. I invite you to imagine that memory as if it were on a little postcard in front of you. And in your mind's eye, I invite you to imagine that postcard getting bigger. Notice what's happening in your body. How does it feel? Where does it feel? As that postcard gets bigger, maybe into an A3. Notice the little details. What do you see? What textures are there? And I invite you to allow that A3 to expand a little more. Allow it to expand your whole vision. Allow it to expand to the left, to the right, up and down. Fully immersing yourself in this space. And this joy. This contentment. And this peace. This is your resource. You can always come back to it. I invite you now to start breathing through the mouth. Deep into the belly. And softly and gently out. Noticing the resistance continuing and committing for this moment. Finding a rhythm that suits you. Or your lungs are full. Breathing in the memory. Letting go of fear. Open mouth. There is nothing to do but breathe. Fully in. Fully out. With every inhale, charging the body. Every exhale, releasing that charge and letting go. Using the music to support you. Continuing with the breath. Always complete, always continuous. Breathing fully in. Fully out. It is safe to breathe. It is safe to feel. It is safe to feel. Breathing in life into our bodies. Breathing in fire. And letting go. We are alive. Let the breath nourish us, fill us up. Every cell. Like a way, feel each breath. And it will show for you. Continue breathing. Stay with the breath. In this moment, you are safe. Fully in, open mouth. Deep into the belly and release. In this moment, you are powerful. In this moment, you are beautiful. Every inhale. Bring life into the body. Continuing to breathe. Staying with the breath, staying committed. Releasing anything you no longer need to hold on to. Letting it go. Letting it out. You're more powerful than you think you are. Staying with the breath. Staying with this moment. It is safe to breathe. It's safe to feel. Breathing deep into the belly. Release. There is nothing to do but breathe. Feeling the charge. The strength of your liveness. Breathing a little deeper. And a little faster if you can. And charging the body. Using the music to support you. We're running every breath. To nourish every cell of your body. Breathing in life. Our... Higher strength, love. Letting go of fear. Shame. Wilt. If you need to move, you can. If you're in a space that you can make some noise, you can also do that. Notice what is coming up for you. What sensations do you notice? When you welcome them? When you embrace them? Continue to build, continue to breathe. Deep into the belly. Release. As we reach our peak song. I invite you to breathe a little deeper and a little faster. Finding a rhythm that suits you. It is safe to breathe. Breathing in that fond... Memory. Letting go of fear. This is the moment. Continuing to breathe, welcoming anything that is coming up. Letting it out, letting it go. Always continuous. Always complete. Staying with the breath. Everything. You are everything. You are everything. Continuing to breathe. Basking in this moment. Acknowledging the power and the strength you have within you. That brought you here to this moment right now. Releasing and letting go. It is safe to feel. Welcome it. Embrace it all. You are not alone. Continuing to breathe. Always continuous, always complete. Being in this moment. Feeling. In this moment, you are safe. In this moment, you are powerful. In this moment, you are beautiful. Breathing a little deeper and a little slower. Activating your parasympathetic. Soothing and holding. I'm with you right now. Getting deeper. And slower. Invite you now to start breathing again through the nose. Returning to a normal. Rhythm. I invite you to come back to your resource. Know that it's there. I invite you to hold yourself where you need to be held. Invite you to send yourself some gratitude for being here. For showing up. Doing the work. Invite you to roll onto one side. Hold yourself. In this moment, you are safe. Beautiful. You're beautiful. You are loved. You are loved. Bringing our attention. To your physical body. I invite you to move your fingers, your toes. When you're ready. Join us back in the room. Welcome back. Maybe we can. Well, use the next kind of 10 minutes or so if anyone wants to be shared. You know, the patient.
Um, I don't know about anyone else, but I found it really interesting that when. It felt almost as if my mind was trying to wander and then it became more challenging to breathe as deeply. So it, it's, yeah. It's like something, I knew it was, I was in a different state, I guess, because it, I could breathe deeper and easier. And then suddenly it would just get really shallow. And I'm like, oh, okay, what's going on? Who's in there? Get lost. And then try and get back to it.
Hmm, thank you, Nessa. Yeah, there is something that is really associated with. Our fear of feeling is directly associated with the depth of our breath. And so. Those points where it's like the shallowness of breath, whether it's in your everyday or whether, whenever it is. It is a resistance or fear to feeling exactly what is happening. And so. Which is where this part, this is quite, breathing deep, doing this conscious connected breath is quite challenging because it's an invitation to feel. And so, yeah, this is a, like, that's a really valid point of like, okay, as soon as you start breathing deeper and your body's already telling you, okay, I'm, I'm not going there. You know, like, no thanks, or like, that's too much already. But that's an interesting space to look at. And then what would be interested, like, with any types of, if we go deeper with breath work, you can go to that feeling first. And see if you can breathe there, even at this point of like, on the tender edge, you're not feeling it fully. But just on the tender edge and breathing deeply there. And see where it is coming up in your body, see what the actual physical sensation of that is, what else is associated. And this is how we can start to. Recollect ourselves. Because at that point where we've lost the breath. That's a point that we've fragmented, we've reached a little bit of our overwhelm, that's our trauma event. So we want to kind of, yeah, using the breath, go into our upper limit, not go like all the way. That we lose ourselves. Just touch it a little bit and see what's happening and see if we can breathe deeply there. And breathing deeply there is really hard, so. It's interesting that, yeah, thank you for sharing that and noticing that in yourself. Powerful. To become aware of that. And notice, when you're, notice when you're like, oh.
Yeah. It was, yeah, it was like night and day. One minute it's just smooth and chilled and then not, and you're like, oh. Like, almost as if a door's closed. And the air can't go through, it's, there's no pathway, there's like a dam. Um, and then I, I would just tell myself that, okay, kind of go back a bit and then. Just, just allow, whatever, however you can breathe right now is okay.
Mm-hmm.
It can ease up and then get a little bit more comfortable. And then the dam, and then comfort and dam. Yeah.
Yeah, but this is like. That is, that's, that is the work. And, um. Yeah, and this, this tool to be able to kind of lean in and then go, okay, that was, and then go back in and out, this is. Yeah, this is how we can do it in our bodies, right? Sometimes we do it in kind of various different like thought patterns or like, okay, I'll think about, you know. This is how we can teach our bodies that actually that. What's happening there. And it, it seems like you've reached a block, like one of your blocks. And that's a point of inquiry, that's where it becomes kind of curious and. Exciting because whenever there's something that's, whenever there's a dam, there's a ton of something behind it and. Yeah, and this is where we can let it flow.
Yeah, that's definitely an interesting tool. So simple. So simple, but always within your control. And that's, I guess, I guess with trauma, that's not always the feeling you have when it's, it's an automatic reaction is just back off, leave it because you, you don't know what's behind the door. And you're not quick to be still with what's behind the door. So to be able to kind of almost not swing, but kind of just ease, like a, a bit like a wave. That's actually quite, um, confident. Yeah, gives a bit more confidence around it. That's pretty good.
Yes, this is so good. What a fun, like to be in this space and be like, okay, I actually can. I can do that.
Could you do something?
Yeah.
Um, I'm just thinking, um, I kind of, I want to debrief a bit more with actually the three of you, um, but I know we're still recording. So, um, I'm wondering Hannah, could you do a kind of like close, just so that people that we do send this recording to can have a kind of close and then I want to stop the recording and then.
And we can do a proper debrief. Yeah, that's nice. Um, okay, so. How do we close? Welcome back.
And we can, well, to finally share it, it's just.
Yeah, no, I think this is valuable. So for it's, um, a lot can come up. And so whatever has come up, allow that to be. And notice that and be aware of it as it comes up, either in the next minute, in the next hours or in the next days. Um, this moment that you've given yourself is, is very valuable and it can, it can be quite a shake. And this is kind of the power of, of this work because you're inviting your body to shake, you're inviting your body to feel. Um, I invite you to do maybe some integrative practices of journaling. Maybe writing down some of the, the experiences that you've had, whether they are cognitive or not, whether they're just whatever is happening, free writing, or whether there's a specific experience that you've, um, that you've had. And drink lots of water. Classic. Classic, um. Yep. Um, and know that you're not alone in this, in any of this. And there's always someone to reach out to. This is my work. This is what I love. Um, this tool has helped me in a huge amount to the point I cannot describe how helpful it has been in clearing the path, in clearing the dams. And to allow myself to be, um, so if you want someone to lean into or to talk with or to maybe, yeah, maybe explore some of the dams that you have, then reach out to me. Um, I'm only an email away.
Thank you so much, Hannah.